Any items from the public?
No.
Okay. We need to approve the agenda, and we have no honorary councilperson today.
Sure, move to approve the agenda for February 23rd, 2023.
Okay, have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. Consent agenda, purchase order log. Do we have anything for Tracy back there? Any questions? No? Good to go. Tracy, you're safe. Let's see. Internal budget revision. Mr. Wine, we have three internal budget revisions to review.
Yes, we do. The first one is from the Sheriff's line item 700, which is law enforcement, asking to move $57 from his training light item to locally closed printing. Both the plenty of money in the training, 716, which is animal control, moving $8 from materials and supplies to contractual services. Plenty of money in the materials and supplies for the move. And 409, which is tax processing, moving $25 from materials and supplies to uniforms. Again, plenty of money to satisfy that requirement also for that.
Okay. New hire recommendation that was approved last week from the Honorable Sheriff Nathan Harmon for Hunter Reef. Okay. As an animal control officer and the annual salary of $35,065, has a new start date effective March 2nd, March the 2nd, 2023. We have the approval of the minutes for 50. I missed the first one. Oh, I did, I'm sorry. New hire recommendation received from Mike Lang, Chief Court Marshal for Holly Miller, as a part-time custodian with the hourly rate of $17.80 an hour effective March 1st, 2023. Sorry about that. Approval of the minutes for February the 7th, 2023. Board of Review and Equalization, everyone was present. And also, February the 9th, 2023, the council meeting, everyone was present. Council calendars. Go back here a little bit. Today, we are meeting here on the 23rd. We met on Tuesday for sign and die.
Mr. President, you have to cede information from Berkeley County Fair to see if you would like to participate in that again this year, or if it's through the 12th.
I believe that would be good. I mean, we always do, so we will acquire our.
Council is not aware of that.
You just, yeah.
We have a booth, we have a large outdoor booth. It's outdoor, right?
Yeah. Outdoor in front of the.
Outdoor booth for the fair. Generally, we take, have a councilperson present, one right, each one versus each item at the booth. And then the department has a company out and just be there at the booth to represent Berkeley County to answer questions.
It's a social. It's a social occasion.
Yeah, that's usually what it is. People, you know, you get a lot of your own friends come up and talk to you a little bit while you're there. And it's in a great spot because you're right across the street or right across the alleyway from the, is it the Young Farmers?
FFA.
FFA, with the sausage and tenderloin sandwiches. So you're in a good spot there and well-received, so. We'll pass out a signup sheet and you just kind of pick an evening or a day that you want to be there. But yep, it's always good to go. It's one of only four youth fairs in the United States. I mean, they have fairs, but this is the only one of four of the youth fairs that are left. So it's quite an event that takes place for our young kids.
Sign us up.
Yeah. So yes, please sign us up. Let's see, back in February.
Our sheriff and clerk, Shelley Chopper, puts a lot of time and effort into that.
Yes, she does, yeah. Tonight, on the 23rd, we have a 5:00 p.m. library board and 5:00 p.m. ambulance authority. 27th, we have Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority meeting and 5:00 p.m. water district. Then we're going to move on over into March 1st, 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday, Telemont. And that's all we have going on for right now. Calendars, we have a bond release for Weber Springs, Section 1, Phase 1, 2, and 3. BCP file number 15-08, letter of credit number 519387, and for the engineering department. We have any questions there for Doug on that? We also have a bond release for Associated Asphalt, BCP file 2007-0417, tied to BCP file 020-01, bond number CIC1907879, an engineering department's recommendation, and also a bond release from Launa Burke Properties, BCP file number 2011-341, tied to BCP file The grading permit or grading bond number is BCP file 2207-206, LOC number 518622-44, and a recommendation from the engineering department. We have a bond release for Goldfinch Meadows, Phase 1, BCP file 41-04, tied to R02146-16, grading file BCP 2111-420, and BCP 2102-044. LOC number is 7300001813-73003, an engineering department recommendation. And then a bond release for Goldfinch Meadows, Phase 2, BCP number 41-04, tied to R00716-17, grading BCP number 2111-240, and BCP number 2102-044, and LOC number 871, and a recommendation from the engineering department. Any questions for Doug on that? If not, motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sure approves, sir.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. And then correction of assessment logs, and the assessor is not here, so we're good to go. Board of meeting reports. HD, we'll start there.
All right. I had two this week, but one I was not able to attend, but Eddie was there to fill in for me. That was the Historic Landmarks Commission. I did go over with him some of the things that went on there. There's been a lot of things going between them and the Morgan Cabin, but I believe Morgan Cabin people attended the meeting and they got everything worked out, so that seems to be headed in the right direction.
I did hear from one of the members that it was a good meeting, so.
Yeah, good. Then I also attended a CVB meeting yesterday. It was a good meeting. Our new board member that we appointed, Mr. Jones, was there. I guess the only, they have one board member that didn't make it, everyone else was there. Talked about several different things. Berkeley County app, there had been a lot of different organizations trying to do their own apps, Main Street app, Chamber app, things like that. So the Chamber has taken on the app themselves with assistance from the CVB, and that the Berkeley County app will cover any and everybody who wants to participate. So there'll be a drop-down menu with Main Street, and they'll have, then that'll direct you to their website and everything, and then there'll be one for the Chamber and one for the CVB, Roundhouse, we say, Apollo, the Library. Whoever wants to be on that app can be on there. If businesses want to advertise on that app, they can, they can contact the Chamber and get onto that app as well. And then each organization would have their own control of their section of that app to a certain extent. So that's being worked on, new logos being worked on for that. That'll, that'll, that'll direct everybody in the same direction to find anything in Berkeley County, basically. And there'll be, there's a QR code that they have on the door at the CVB, and I'm sure they'll start spreading around other places that you can scan with your phone to go and check out things there. They had 71 guests last month, 79 this month, visitors through the Bell Boyd House or the CVB. Last year, they had a total of 2,604. They said they're on track to beat that number this year. They put up an artwork display in the CVB of a local art, a couple of local artists. And what else? Their money is good.
Do they sell like books written by local artists like Roger Engel and the Digital Experience and that kind of stuff?
I believe so. Mr. Engel is on the board. They, I don't know if they're selling things in there for sale. I know they have all the documentation, you know, card racks and all that, and they direct people in places, and they do tours. They discuss the tours at the Roundhouse on how to deal with donations for those tours to clarify that, so there's no gray areas, because now they're doing tours for the Roundhouse. We're going to have a box put up down there that the people, when they end the tour, they stop it at the donation box. If you'd like to put in a donation, here's the box. That way, whoever it is giving the tours isn't handling money, there's never any questions on anything there. But I'm not sure if they're selling the things there.
I hope so.
They may be, they may be. There's a lot going on in that building. And they discussed the possibility of some things that have been talked about, about possibly relocating museums done. But yeah, that's about it.
Okay. Thank you so much. Mr. Barnhart.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was the end of the month, and I had no meetings.
Very good. Steve?
Several. Tuesday night, we had a sewer board meeting and followed by the stormwater board, and of course, the three board members served on both of those. And. And business, as usual, with the sewer board, they've got a lot of stuff going on with the Stormwater. I just wanted to say that they were very, very appreciative of our vote last week to agree to be a co-permittee on the permit. So they're going to move forward to that as soon as possible, and try to get that stuff, and then they're going to get with Anthony as well, have their attorney get with him to start working on the M O U. for that as well, so. So glad to see that getting going, and in the meantime, probably, we'll be able to work on the new Stormwater ordinance, while all this is taking place, instead of just waiting until that happens. So, and then yesterday, actually, was my first senior service board meeting. It got snowed out in January, my first meeting scheduled, and a really good board there, too. Gary's on the board, and Ron Collins, the ass commissioner, and just a lot of people that I knew, Richard Dennis, and of course, Pat Henry's the president of that board. And they've got a very nice facility, they're very appreciative of everything that the county has done for them over there.
It's the top facility in the state, I believe.
Yes, yes, and they appreciate it very much, believe me, so. And then this evening, I have my second ambulance authority meeting, five o'clock this evening here in Missburg, so, before to that.
Very good.
I did want to say that I did have a meeting this morning with Anthony and the sheriff, and Doc. from the assessor's office, and Eddie came by, and we're trying to get the license thing moving forward, to start having outstate tags changed properly, and start collecting those fees that we should be collecting. And it was a very good meeting, I appreciate their time and effort. And I expressed to them, I don't want to put extra work on any of them, but it was discussed several years ago, and I think it's time now to implement the thing and get it started. And so hopefully, we'll have an update on that in the future, and everyone present was very willing to work towards that objective, to get, start getting folks to change their tags properly, like they should be doing. So obviously, you know, we had the sheriff in here for his budget hearing last week, and he'd like to have more deputies, and this potentially could be a source of revenue that could provide that, you know. So hopefully, we see that action take place here soon. And I thank all the representatives over there that have worked on things, so. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Ready?
Yes, sir. I was on the R and R. radio this week, in which it's always a good opportunity to get on there and discuss, you know, before they said, what do you want to discuss? I said, it doesn't matter to me, throw it out there, you know, we'll deal with it. So, but they're always good, very professional. You know, we were all over the place, between, you know, the fire service, the J L. bill, you know, we're just legislative issues, so just a wide variety of discussions there. Had a meeting with Parks and Rec this week. All their programs are now larger than what they were at pre-COVID. I mean, things, they're busy, their programs are growing. The Spring Mills Park construction was awarded to Rick Pugh Construction, to go in and do the excavating of that, of that park there in Spring Mills, so that's moving forward. He was also the low bid on the removal of the spoils pile there at Dupont Soccer Field. They are doing a Easter egg hunt along with the ambulance authority at Port House Farm Park in April, and there's a pickleball tournament in March eleventh and twelfth at the Randy Smith Center. And there was also a discussion, which I think Mr. Cat has been involved with the Rooney Park improvements. He's been working with Bob Williams and the Little League, and I think a travel team league to get some improvements to Rooney Park that's been needed for quite a while. Also had a planning commission meeting, which the largest discussion of the whole evening, had people come forward concerned about the possible development off of Welltown School Road called Clover Hill.
Hill ran reform.
Yeah, so, you know, their, you know, their concerns, you know, were heard, because obviously, it's not on our agenda, it hasn't been on our agenda yet, but word is out in the community that this subdivision, you know, may be coming that way. So folks are already speaking in opposition of it. As H D. mentioned, I did meet with landmarks to try and help facilitate some common good and common communication with Morgan Cabin, which ended up being very successful. And the other day, I met with the Water District. I was on their groundwater protection board years ago, and I was asked to come back. So we had a discussion yesterday about different ways to protect their groundwater that goes into their system, from the LaFever Spring or the river.
Well, that is, should be delineated, the recharge area. Delineates it, it should be delineated, you know, recharge for the LaFever Springs, to keep things out, fuel storage tanks, and that sort of stuff. I don't know if that's current or not.
I'm not sure, you know, his concern was, or his comment was, without zoning, it's very hard to protect those areas. And that's why I just think it's important that when we do have a spill in that area, or if, you know, I know there's been some folks looking at doing some commercial development south of there, you know, for the county to be involved in that conversation with the Water District, to make sure that that LaFever Springs is protected.
Okay. Anything else?
No, sir. Hi. With the thing about the development over there, I did speak to some people in the Water Department, and they said, they've talked to them a couple of times, and they don't have the way right now to supply enough water to put that development in there. So that is an obstacle they're going to have to overcome to, if they are going to put that development. They said it's all uphill, and it's above, it's too high, and they have a hard time getting water to it. So we've had a couple of discussions with them, and told them they don't know how they're going to do it, and they just keep asking, but, so that, that could be potential roadblock to that.
Might need a storage tank out there on top of it.
Yeah, so they'll have to put a tank in.
And tanks don't come cheap.
No, they said there's a small one out there already, but it's already at capacity.
Beyond its capacity.
It's another subdivision out there that had that issue, too, off of Ridge Road.
It was originally put in when that one was the Hedgesville Water District, and they put in a small one, and Ridge Road has run so much that they can't even really supply all that, so.
Well, and the folks that came in, they had legitimate concerns, you know, they talked about the water, you know, they talked about the road, you know, which is certainly not adequate, the best approved for that subdivision, which is covered by this, or controlled by the state of West Virginia, you know, and they also, you know, concerned about the school system, which, once again, we have no control over that. But certainly items to consider and take in consideration.
Okay, and I had no meetings to report on, except for I will be heading out of town here today, I have to go to Charleston, so, moving right along.
Charleston, getting ready for you.
Yeah, yeah.
They got police at all the...
All the roadblocks, waiting for me to get there, yes. So you may see my picture in the post office when we get there. Okay, no honorary councilperson. Oh, I'm sorry, go back up here to, new application received from Mr. Clarence Martin for the museum board, as well as Robert Mah...
Mahaffey.
Mahaffey, so we'll want to bring them in for interviews. Okay, schedule them, and moving right along.
No, you have board vacancies.
Oh, board vacancies, do we have any vacancies to fill?
Yes, sir, we do. I'd like to nominate Mr. Michael Bush, who was before us, this last week, or week before, for the planning commission.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like, sign opposed? We will notify him, to tell him he needs to get sworn in, so.
There is, there is a vacancy at the C V B., but I did receive an application yesterday in turn-in, so it'll probably come before us next week.
Sounds good. All right.
Just mentioned.
Sure.
Penny, while we're kind of on our schedule here and everything, for the Tiff. District Workshop, which is March the second, make sure, if you would please, to send invitations to Development Authority, the Water District, the Sewer District, the City of Martinsburg, And anybody else that you all feel should be here, I know that those entities, I think, could benefit, you know, at least being able to hear the information as presented.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, ten o'clock, is Mr. Will Lawrenson, fiduciary supervisor, F Y. two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four budget presentation.
Good morning, Council.
Morning, sir. I hear people just dying to get into this.
That's, that is...
A joke.
Okay. That's not a very...
I'm sorry.
But given the status of some of our newer council members, I thought it appropriate to kind of inform and go over some of my office's personnel and duty histories. The fiduciary supervisor position was created by the West Virginia Legislature in nineteen eighty-two as an optional procedure for counties whom otherwise rely on county clerks' offices to handle their probate issues. While other counties still rely on county clerks to handle probate issues for their citizenry, our Eastern Panhandle, rather than included, Berkeley County took advantage of this optional procedure in nineteen eighty-seven. Although this office was housed up until recently at the old courthouse, the current clerk's office, the fiduciary supervisor and our staff has since its inception served at this council's pleasure. Our office is mandated to deal in various aspects of the West Virginia probate process, whereas counties still using clerk's office to handle their probate seek constant approval and guidance from fiduciary commissioners. Fiduciary supervisors and their staff rely far less on these commissioners, as we only use them for states' roil and conduct. Our office aids in the filing of probate documents, to ensure that they adhere to form, not the content. We give practical, non-legal advice to individuals within the West Virginia probate process. We advise individuals of what is required to qualify as personal representatives of a decedent's estate. We ensure that due process is given to all interested parties within estates. We collect various fees for the county clerk to preserve fiduciary documents on public record, and on, and on, and on. These are some, but not all, of the duties my office handles on a daily basis. As for staffing, Maria Childers was the, this council's first fiduciary supervisor appointed in nineteen eighty-seven, and she served at that role until December of two thousand and nineteen. Janet Holshouser was also hired as deputy supervisor in nineteen eighty-seven. In the early two thousands, a third position called a fiduciary coordinator was brought on, as this council directed. Presently, my office is staffed by, still staffed by Janet Holshouser as deputy, although, as this council can see, she plans on retiring in two thousand and twenty-three. My also is also staffed by Colleen Stevens, also serving as deputy fiduciary supervisor, serve as sole deputy fiduciary supervisor upon Ms. Holshouser's retirement. At the beginning of the current fiscal year, my office employed Christina Eisenberg as the fiduciary coordinator, but she left us in September two thousand and twenty-two to pursue other employment opportunities. In the meantime, my office has a contractual employee, Marty Kisecker. Mr. Kisecker was formerly the head trust officer for B B. and T., now Truus. He served the tri-state for decades, giving them estate planning and trust planning needs. Let's see, he dealt with estates of successful business owners, litigious estates, estates with beneficiaries all over the world, estates with assets all over the world, et cetera. Until his recent retirement, Mr. Kisecker handled these estates for more than two decades. Now for my actual budget proposals given to you for two thousand and three, two thousand and four. First, obviously, is the pending retirement of Janet Holshouser. In January of this year, Ms. Holshouser has announced her plans to retire in October of this year. She has served this county and this council with distinction for nearly four decades, and will be missed by all her friends that she's made here at the county along the way. With Ms. Holshouser's retirement certain, I am proposing that her protege, Colleen Stevens, be given a pay increase, given her expanded role and responsibilities as the sole deputy fiduciary supervisor. The proposal I've attached to my budget request is just a hair above ten percent, a ten percent increase in annual salary for Mrs. Stevens. Third, my proposal asks that we add the formerly held position of fiduciary coordinator to our employ as of the start of fiscal year two thousand and three, two thousand and four. As stated, this office had this grade-eight position for nearly twenty years prior to Ms. Eisenberg's departure. During all that time, we have been staffed for a full-time staff of three, a number I believe to be insufficient, but I'll talk about that in just a second. With Ms. Holshouser's pending and certain retirements, our full-time staff will be reduced to two. Thus, I am asking for the position of fiduciary coordinator be reinstated to my office, so that we can continue to grow with our growing populace's estate needs. Finally, in bridging the gap of what I feel to be insufficient numbers for our full-time staff, I have asked for a significant increase to my contractual budget to keep Mr. Kisecker on as a contractual employee. Although he has limited hours in his retirement, Mr. Kisecker's experience, wisdom, and fortitude have proven invaluable to my office. I simply ask that he be allowed to continue at his current rate for the fiscal year two thousand and three, two thousand and four. If any of you have questions, I'm happy to help in any way that I can. Thank you.
Any questions, comments?
I know that how helpful fiduciary has been, I mean, in my case, my, my mother's estate, it was Maria, very helpful in leading us through the quagmire that is the estate process.
As well as mine.
Same reasons. It's not a self-explanatory process. You need some backing to tend. Counties that rely solely on their clerk's offices, you get less guidance.
It's a free service to our constituents, correct?
That is correct. Well, free, in the sense of our services are free, the filing fees and such do require.
I know that I'm always very, very comfortable in referring people to your office in their difficulty of trying to work through the proceedings, you know, that they have to deal with. So I know that you handle them very well, and very professionally, and thank you for that.
So you're asking for a forty thousand dollar increase?
That is correct, council. So in the previous council, we actually, with Ms. Eisenberg's departure, that contractual service was actually, so we are currently employing Marty Kisecker as a contractual employee, using the money otherwise used for Ms. Eisenberg's full-time salary. We shifted that with Mr. Davis's blessing, and of course, with his council's blessing. What I ask is that we continue to adhere to that rate, and that Mr. Kisecker be continued on, if this council, certain council members will remember my previous budget proposal. Of course, a lot of my training in the legal field had me not reinvent the wheel, so I used a lot of what Maria Childers's budgets used to look like, which, of course, she didn't have any changes for decades. They were the same people, serving for the same years. Uh, they were the same people, serving for the same years, and, uh, that was short-sighted on my part, uh, and that led to us kind of having this gap of no contractual services for a period in the Eisenberg lab. Uh, so I'm hoping to correct that gap, is my hope.
Is Maria going to be?
So Ms., uh, Ms. Childers was with our office, uh, for a period of time, contractually dealing with a backlog of, uh, fiduciary documents. There are boxes, dozens, if not hundreds, of boxes of these documents. And, uh, the hope was that Ms. Childers would be able to recognize them on sight as something they need to pull, accord, you know, do something else with, uh, or destroy. Um, upon discussion with Mr. Davis and in joint efforts with Mr. Petrusi, uh, it has been decided that that kind of description of her duties was more of a clerk's duty. Uh, she was looking at documents that either A should already be on public record or B should be destroyed. And given that the clerk is the keeper of record, it was thought that, uh, so Mr. Petrusi and I, in tandem, are working with Ms. Childers to, for her to return, um, through the clerk's capacity.
I had several experiences with Marty Kiessecker over the years in estate settlements for our park system. It's just top of the land and, uh, and in doing that contractually, then it saves us, of course, the benefit package if you're a full-time employee. Makes a lot of sense to me to continue that as a contracted basis. Uh, he's, he's top-notch, there's no question about it.
We are lucky to have. Several banks have attempted to, uh, poach him from us.
Yeah.
Mr. President, if I could offer all of the services that everyone has talked so kindly about that Will and his team provide, had a shoestring budget, I mean, he pulls all of this off with very, very.
An amount.
The reward to the constituents of this body is at a nominal cost, and he should be committed to that. That's a good job.
We do see. My staff do well.
As well as you.
Hmm.
So, so really and truly, as far as your, uh, your personnel request, what, what you're really doing there, Will, is, uh, just reorganizing your workforce, uh, which certainly is a smart thing to do.
Yeah, on, on our paper and personnel requests, it, it, I was concerned, the reason I attached my memo was, on the surface, it looks like I'm asking for an awful lot. And, uh, you know, with the new, uh, new employee, uh, the, the rate change, uh, for Mrs. Stevens, the additional contractual, uh, services, and really what we're trying to do is manage status quo. Uh, we're trying to return to a full-time staff of three. Again, in later council meetings, uh, for future budgets, we'll talk about that full-time staff. Right now, I don't have the space for it, uh, for an additional full-time, fourth full-time employee. What we're really trying to do is just restore, uh, three full-time, uh, employees, given this, uh, householders, uh, retirement status or pending retirement status.
Average monthly estate settlements, do we have at least thirty, thirty-five?
Typically, uh, they actually were, uh, increased a lot, uh, in, in twenty twenty-two, and that was because I had the staff to go after, uh, for lack of a better term, uh, these personal reps who kind of turned in their appraisement, which is the second of the three steps of probate, and just did nothing. Um, I have discussed with this, or with previous councils, uh, there is a legislative measure to, um, administratively close some of these estates that have had no activity within, I think, a period of three years, which I think is actually kind of low. Some of these estates are, uh, like I said, litigious, and lawsuits take time. Uh, so.
If, and I was going to say, if it is closed by your office because of lack of activity, nothing says it cannot be reopened.
That is correct.
If it needs.
We're actually dealing with a lot, uh, a, a slew of estates that are having to be reopened for, you know, tax refunds may payable to these states, uh, things that may, just things happen, and we, we deal with that all the time. Um, but, but, you know, but like I say, the, the new process for dealing with smaller estates, estates of fifty thousand dollars of tangible assets, cars, bank accounts, things like that, and one hundred thousand dollars or less of real estate, does not require settlements. So in lack of a better term, uh, somebody comes in, uh, presents our office with all that we need, uh, for, uh, for classic probate, they are issued a small estate certificate, and that's it. This off, this council never sees them, their names are never read on, uh, because they have six months to deal with any probate assets. They're done.
There's many moving parts to that office and, and, uh, I don't know if you're getting the same education that I'm getting. I, uh, thank you.
Of course.
Of course.
Yeah, we haven't, I mean, probate in West Virginia hasn't changed really at all since the nineteen hundreds. And, uh, yeah, in the last three years, it has changed exponentially. Um, so it, we're excited for the changes, it means less burden on people. If you have a fifty-two dollar check, you no longer have to go through all three steps of probate to reimburse yourself for, you know, five thousand dollars that you paid for a cremation, you don't have to do that anymore.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Will.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Check of me in the mail.
Alrighty, next on the agenda is, um, Mr. Witro with the Extension Service, if he's ready.
How are you all, Council?
Very good, how are you?
Huh. I gave, uh, coming around is kind of just our annual report, usually we try to give an update every twice a year, so it's coming around. Uh, we did just hold our Extension Service Committee last week. Mr. Barnhart was. So it must not have been too bad, so he decided to rehire me, uh, so that's always a good thing. Um, extensions win higher feats, I think, every year. Uh, we've already, we just crossed into six hundred and fifty four H members that are fully registered, barefoot. We have over a hundred registered, vetted, fully-serving volunteers, vetted through W B U. Um, Mary Beth just finished, uh, one of the largest master gardener classes that she's had in probably the last decade. Um, and we're partnering more with W B U East Medicine, uh, probably more than we've ever had or wanted to, uh, just to offer different types of programming, um, at the request of, you know, the community, some people from this council, trying to do a better job of regaining all parts of the county, um, so we're up to twenty-four four-H clubs. It's getting a little bit up there, um, much more than the twelve that we reported on about a decade ago. Um, but all signs are going good. Um, if you look at our budget requests, we are kind of adding, uh, we're hoping to get more travel as well as, um, office supplies. Um, and as, as we grow, we're finding ourselves needing more and more resources, especially consumables. Um, this past year alone, we were in seventeen schools and served over seventy-four hundred students. Um, we're also partnering with outside organizations, I call it Mr. Cat with eye, so we're partnering, um, we're doing a new program, Walk with These, so we're using the Rain Smith Center, um, we're also use Berkeley Two Thousand for that. Um, and that's work that our nutritional outreach instructor, Karen Kozlowski, is doing. Um, in that program, she's already served three to four hundred people, um, which is something that we've never kind of had the avenue to do before. Um, that partnership, Jennifer asked me if there was something we could bring, and that was just what we decided we'd offer at the time. Um, Karen's now doing that three days a week. Um, so she's, she's, she's looking to add one in Hedgesville, hopefully in the next couple of months. Um, but as you look through our report, I don't think there's any much change. Um, we haven't had an increase in our budget in a number of years. Um, this is kind of the first year we have a real big push to, to do it. Um, we're, we're in the point now where we're starting to see a lot more of our kids that are in a seasoned age, so that eighteen to twenty-one-year-old is where, twenty-one is where they age out. Um, at age sixteen, they're eligible for national events, so in the last five years, we've started to really up the number of national events that we are taking our kids to. Um, and that, associated with that, that's why the increase in travel is there. Um, the travel increases enough to do three events where we would take the youth. Julie Snyder was last year, they were a national four-H Congress. Um, it's been that youth member, too, and from the airport, um, so you would then fly to Admano, and then the travel would be covered. So not, not a whole lot of an increase, but enough that, you know, we're making some really good impacts with the dollars that we're getting. Um, getting ready for the move, March sixth is our official move date, we're working on hiring a company now. Um, don't go upstairs, it looks like a bomb went off, but I appreciate all the efforts. Uh, but we're, we're excited for the move, working through a lot of different things with Mr. Lang, um, just to get ready for that.
What's the status on the building? Is it ready?
It's almost completed, they're finishing doors and card access and locks and stuff right now.
So and our I T personnel, at the beginning of the week, so everything's good to go. Essentially, we unplug here, move everything over, plug in, and we're ready to go.
It looks really nice. I stopped out this week and, uh, took a little walk through, and it looks really nice.
So we're excited, we've got some, still some work to do. Uh, we haven't shut down our office, so we're still doing foot traffic. I actually just finished, um, I taught seven lessons of advocacy yesterday in the middle school. Um, so in between doing programming and packing work, we're getting there.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, we had a extension committee meeting just last week.
It's all run together, yeah, um, one of these last couple of Wednesdays.
And, of course, they, they gave her, uh, there is, uh, people gave a report on what they're doing, and it's pretty impressive what they're doing. And, uh, the, uh, true lady, uh, she also conducts a class with the David Kitchen.
So we've, we've been very fortunate that she's made her work with towns to, and hopefully have a facility there to offer that class. That's the only one that requires a kitchen, so that she can make the demonstration and serve a population that comes. Um, so we're excited to see that in the plans as they report.
I live on a camp frame roof, by the way, and so.
I've passed her house quite a few times.
It's nice to hear him singing again in the evenings, you know, from the campfire. We didn't hear that for a few years.
Oh.
Well, I'll say this, I, I went to camp, I, I went to basketball camp for a month every year when I was growing up. I decided to join four-H one year just so I could go to camp. It's the most fun I ever had in my life.
Hey, come on back. Hey, June twelfth through what, seventeenth this year, I'll be there all week.
It was awesome.
Come on back, um, that Wednesday night.
What capacity now, back there?
Oh, that's a great question. So we're working on getting new beds, um, so right now, we're sitting at one fifty.
One fifty?
And it, that makes it tight.
I see you had four hundred roughly.
So we do three weeks now.
Three weeks. Average a hundred and fifty a week, all week, yeah.
It's all three counties?
Yes, so it's all three counties, and then we've been supplementing that. Um, Suzanne might roll her eyes when I say this, I've been roped into helping with the state-level camps now. Um, so we've been taking delegations to a lot of the state camps, just because there's so much overlap during the summer. Um, so we actually, this might not be anything, but Alpha One is one of our premier state camps, so it's one of the largest in the state that we do, it has about four hundred and fifty kids that go. So Berkeley County was able to actually send a delegation of about forty-two last year, um, which was the largest group we've ever sent to a state camp. Um, and that's just because it's in July. So that, of course, takes me out a week of July, but.
And that's where?
Jacksonsville.
Jackson Mills, too.
So we'll head there.
Are you getting band camps back?
Yeah, so we've gotten two.
Got two.
Um, the, we've lost, uh, we've lost Jefferson, Washington still comes. Hedgesville is now using it, but they're only, uh, facility only, they're not staying over.
Not staying over, yeah.
And then, um, we've actually got a number of churches using it for retreats now. Um, the, and I, at some point, they might come and talk to you guys about a request. Um, but we've, since it's set empty for so long, for two years, we're starting to have to put in a lot more money and effort and resources to get it back out of the park.
How's the pool?
Cold.
You ask that question every year, and I get more and more nervous to answer it. Um, so we're grandfathered in with our pool for the health department, um, but there are some changes that need, but as soon as we start changing it, we have to just, it'll all be cold. So it's, it's still, it's.
They don't last forever.
Off on itself.
They don't last forever.
No.
Yeah. So, and it's, it's lasted thirty, forty years at this moment. So a lot of kids have been in it, so that's why I stay out of it.
It's how live to choose for yourself. It needs to be replaced, though.
And, and that's on the docket.
That pool's over fifty years old. Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
It's, it's well over fifty.
Yeah. See, I don't even know what it's been, I just know people that have said when they put it in, and that was in the, I don't know, I don't like dating people. Um, but like my mom said, it was put in when she was little, so I know it's at least fifty years old at that point, but. But it's all, you know, we're, we have our toe in so many cons in the county, it's one of those things that, you know, working with the youth fair, working with the board of bed, working with, um, working a lot with Epic, we're looking, looking with the Manial's House. You know, we're doing a lot more for the community. This past year, we collected, if Bernadette's upstairs packing her, she would have came down, she's the newest hired girl in our office. Um, we had right around six hundred toys for Christmas, it was about four thousand dollars. Um, and that's just what we kept track of, um, that we were able to get back out to the schools, so that brought our total up. This is our fourth year going, we hit twenty-one thousand dollars in resources just given back through our Christmas toy donation drive. Um, and then we also do a drive to benefit Meals on Wheels, we have one that does all the shelters, um, rescue mission, we have a hygiene drive. Um, and then last year during camp, um, our theme was Survivor, so they packed Survivor bags. Um, we've packed roughly five thousand hygiene kits, that included a three-day supply shoe, gallon of water, and a five-gallon bucket of bubble paper towels, a throw, like there was just all kinds of stuff shampooed in these buckets, uh, but we were able to make about five thousand of them. Uh, so we're pumping, we have a lot of donations coming in, we have a lot of resources coming in, but we're putting out probably just as much of not more. Um, and then the last project, Julie Snyder took on, um, when we send them to Congress, it's fully paid for by our county just through different fundraisers and resources, none of it actually comes from the word of travel. Um, but they have to do a project for the community, um, and she decided to do women's, um, hygiene products. It was part of our Survivor theme, um, but she did emergency bags, so it had feminine hygiene products. Um, and then the ten bits requested, um, you know, nail file, compact mirror, tissue type things. Um, and she was able to pack, I think, three hundred Gypsy bags, which are those little makeup, I think that's what they're called at least. Um, but she packed three hundred of those. So it, it's taken a step further where we've, we've always led our kids to do things, and now we're trying to push them to take on projects. So Elena Miller actually rebuilt the nurse's camping porch on a youth ring, it's her project. So we're doing a lot, we're getting our kids to do a lot.
The airshow that's coming up at the end of August is, they're going to need some volunteers, too, I don't know, that interest your group or not?
Yeah, I mean, we've got four pop clubs that meet there in Inwood and South Berkeley area, so we can definitely.
In volunteering, there is a stipend that's given back from the, uh.
I think we've helped with parking.
Help with park, okay.
I think that is what.
We're going to need parking, we're going to need attendees, like at some of the venues for the vendors. And then, um, it's a, one vendor's hired, but yet we supply the, the bodies for it, and then there's a ten percent, um.
Yeah.
It's given back.
We actually have a leader fundraiser Saturday, so I'm ready to.
But don't let them talk you into trash detail, just stay with.
No, yeah, I've, I've learned from that, we did trash detail one year at the apple harvest, and never again. Uh, I've learned a lot in my four or five years here at this point, jumped on quick.
I got a story about trash detail, but I'll tell it later, it's funny.
So, but glad to do what we do, it's been a fun, fun ride this far in here.
Yeah, and it's, you know, it's, it's great that you've got, that your programs are growing, children are involved. You know, there's a lot of choices today for, for a child, and hopefully they're making the right choices, getting involved in different programs, you know? But also, you know, I would, I would have to congratulate the parents and the grandparents to, to support those kids, to get them where they need to be, and being able to participate, uh, in the programs.
And it's, we've had really a remarkable success of adding new programs. About.
Ten years ago, we started seven and twelve.
Um, that was our largest program, we had about sixty kids in it. Um, four years ago, um, shooting sports became a big thing in West Virginia when Jenny Thrasher was at the Olympics, so might as well start shooting sports. Um, and now we already serve seventy-two kids. Uh, we actually have practice tonight at six o'clock at Fairground, so if anyone's going to swing by, we'll be out there with their bows. So we have, uh, twelve that'll shoot Genesis bows, which is the beginner compound, and then we have twelve more that'll come with their own bows. Uh, we have twelve going to the state competition on April first for it, and then we have one air rifle. Twelve-year-old, thirteen-year-old, uh, Rowan Lombardo, she qualified, she was six in the state. So she's actually going to go shoot on W B U's rifle range Saturday at three thirty, so.
Very nice.
Some different moving parts, but we're excited to see.
Let's know how she does.
Will do, I'll be sure, I might bring her in. So she's a, she is probably the top-rated archer in our division. When she was six, we're hoping she breaks top five, that's her goal, so we've been, we've been practicing four times a week. So trying to make, trying to make the kids have fun.
We really appreciate what you do for the community. Four-H is a wonderful thing for our youth.
So we're, we're doing a lot better job now of partnering, so we actually, let me get my lunch straight. So we moved in March sixth, um, two weeks later, the twentieth, we actually meet with the area council for the scouts. Um, so we're trying to bring scouts back to you, um, just because they've always been invited. So we're trying to bring scouts back to you, just because they've always been invited, but we've never had kind of time to guide them. Not that we have it now, but we have been able, have a grant coming, hopefully, coming in that'll cover a program assistant through WBU. It's a call share program, so we'll pay 5,000, they'll pay 5,000. We get twelve weeks of work as an intern. And we're gonna hopefully be able to ship some of those spare responsibilities to that person. We've got six local kids at WBU in the agricultural extension program. So we're pushing to get all six of them to apply, hire at least two. So we've been very fortunate to be able to hire one the last couple of years. But we're hoping this year, we can come through too. And that's all for me, sir.
Very good.
We're thankful for the two people you give us, Suzanne and Bernadette couldn't do enough. So we're very thankful for that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Oh, thank you.
Mike, thanks again for all that you do for this community and the youth.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys.
All righty. Well, we're just in time for a break. I think that's next, isn't it? All right. We'll take a break here for 15 minutes.
I'm just filling in a couple minutes.
Oh.
Meetings back in session and we have the prosecuting attorney, the Honorable Kelly Deli, Katie Deligati. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, as President and Council members, I am here today to present my budget proposal, which is very similar to what I've asked for in the past, the addition of a request for an additional prosecuting attorney. There are a couple reasons I'm making that request and my office manager, felony coordinator, guy who keeps the show running, Dom, who came with me, put together a memo that has some case statistics for your deal.
Thank you.
And what it shows is that generally filings are again up from years past. There's a slight decline in felonies originating in magistrate court, but there are more misdemeanors being filed. There's also, you'll see a decline in abuse and neglect cases that have been filed over 2022, and I can tell you that that is because of the crisis that I think everyone is aware of at the DHHR where we just do not have the workers to properly investigate what's happening so that when we do have, hopefully, a fully-staffed child protective services, I believe that number will skyrocket. The other justification that I wanted to share with you for my request for an additional assistant prosecuting attorney is logistics. We are at a point where we have, we will have five circuit judges taking felony criminal cases and we have six magistrates. And while they have a schedule where they're supposed to only run two magistrate courts, criminal courts at a time, they frequently have what we refer to as rogue dockets where they go ahead and schedule criminal court. So we could end up with needing eight prosecutors potentially to cover courtrooms just for felonies and misdemeanors. And so there's a concern there that while we have the staff to cover those courtrooms, provided that, you know, everyone's at work and doesn't have other conflicts, it's not as efficient as it would be if we were able to ensure that the dedicated prosecutor is able to cover his or her case. So I really have tried in my tenure to make a point to never ask for anything unless I really need it. And I think you could see over the time I've been prosecuting attorney, I haven't asked for any substantial increase in operating budget. I've had a few requests for personnel and looking at what we're facing in terms of population growth and greater, frankly, greater enforcement by the sheriff's department and expanding our judiciary that's sitting in Berkeley County, our office would greatly benefit and be able to more efficiently close cases if we had an additional assistant prosecuting attorney. And so that's why I'm making that request. I would be happy to answer any questions anyone has about the functions of my office or, you know, that request, my budget generally or anything else.
I don't think anybody can question your workload. Obviously, I'm assuming you're the second busiest court in the land, in the state?
Well, it really depends on who you ask and how you ask it. They did a judicial workload survey that led to, it was basically a self-reporting of how busy you are and the end result of that was, of course, county counties as they need more judges. But I did not have Dominic put together a comparison of our caseload compared to other counties. Generally in the past, what we've seen is we are, I'd say, barely on par with Montangalia. It has more population, a greater caseload, a prosecutor's office about twice the size of ours. But as my dad was always happy to point out, there have been years where our, at the time, five magistrates collected more than these than their 10 magistrates. So, you know, it really depends on how you measure that.
How many prosecutors do you have?
So we have 12, including myself, that are assigned to circuit court matters. We have three that handle magistrate court. So they each have two magistrates.
And what would the new prosecutor be assigned to?
They would be relief for felony caseloads because as it is now, we've had to expand what prosecuting attorneys handle in terms of juvenile cases. So in the past, we had one prosecuting attorney, one assistant prosecuting attorney handling all abuse and neglect cases and one assistant prosecuting attorney handling all juvenile delinquency and status offenses. The caseload has grown and we have more judges assigned to that such that we have two for each of those categories. So we have two prosecuting attorneys handling abuse and neglect matters and two handling juvenile delinquency and status offenses. And we, in order to make that work, we've had to draw from who has assigned felony caseloads. So I do take, it's a difficult balance to make sure that the office runs properly while also taking on a felony caseload. I do take some cases, we just finished up a murder trial a couple weeks ago and we're actually in the middle of our grand jury right now where we will conclude with, I believe the last number was about 95 felony indictments for the February term. So that's what we'd be looking for, for an additional person.
Is that enough?
I believe, like I said, I make a point to never ask for more than I need or never ask unless I need something. So I think at this point, it would be, it would be a big relief. It would be a big help to us to have that additional person.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely correct that when DHHR gets reorganized and they get the people in the right places, you are going to see an increase in your workload. You know, our sheriff, you know, has been, that department has been aggressive in their work and our population continues to increase, so does everybody else's workload and responsibilities.
It certainly has affected our office. There was a time where, you know, there are workers assigned to every juvenile delinquency or status offense case and there was a time where there was only one of those workers covering all of Morgan and Berkeley County. So a lot of what they do, our assistant prosecutors, had to step in and do to make referrals for placement of children or organize MDTs, things like that. So I hope that when they're appropriately staffed, that's going to add some to our workload but also make the cases flow in a more efficient way. And I unfortunately think it's going to take some time before we have that staffing in place. So I can't promise I won't be making this ask next year, depending on what happens with the department, but for the time being, I think an additional prosecutor would be very, very helpful.
I only have one question. I understand what you're saying, you're asking, I just don't see it on the sheet here. Is it not in the budget request on line 23, 24?
Mr. Boyd, it is. Mr. Davis provided you a summary kind of up in your read ahead. When the constitutional office departments makes the budget request, the personnel line items are blocked. So it doesn't get rolled into the bottom line. It's a $96,700 some dollar request is what it is.
Right. I saw that, but I just didn't see it.
That's why.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah, I saw it on the additional, but I was just confused why it wasn't on this.
That's why.
Our excellent IT department makes our budget packets for, from our side, pretty foolproof in that we can't mess with personnel numbers. We can make those requests separately and then I did make some.
I understand that. I was just like.
There was a day in those requests where they would be added in and we could never find the starting number. That's why they were excluded. Thank Mr. Davis for that.
Sorry.
I had a question. When you bring in a special prosecutor from out of the county, do we reimburse them? Do we pay that?
That's a very good question. Only for mileage. And if somebody would have to essentially, only expenses. Right.
So the state takes that expense up then?
It actually, in a way, is the county's expense, the shared expense among counties. So before we had the Prosecuting Attorneys Institute, the county commissions would pick just another attorney to serve as a special prosecutor. It would be just a, you know, defense attorney from the community or something like that. They created the institute because those attorneys were running up bills that the counties would have to pay. So now every prosecuting attorney is tasked with serving as a special prosecutor for other counties. So, you know, we have a couple matters where we have other counties serving as a special prosecutor here, but at the same time, I've been appointed and having assistants in my office handle matters for Morgan County and Jefferson County where their prosecutor has had to step aside. And so essentially, we just, we get appointed by the head of the institute in Charleston and then we submit the reimbursement or you'll occasionally see a request for mileage from Jefferson County here or something like that. But that is the extent of, the extent. It's just part of the statute requires us to occasionally act as special prosecutors for other jurisdictions.
And so you just, it's all incorporated into your regular salary then?
Yes.
What you're saying, there's no extra pay for it or anything?
Correct.
Understood. Thank you.
I don't have any other questions. You know, I want to thank you and your staff for what you do and thank you for your cooperation in trying to minimize our expenses. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you all. I want to reiterate, my office is always open. If anyone wants to come down, meet the assistants, see the office, please just let me know. We'd be happy to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Sorry I missed part of your budget presentation.
Okay.
My other job. It was my other job, so. Okay, next on the agenda is Mary Hess Assessor for his budget presentation.
Good afternoon.
Almost. Depends on what time you got up.
Yeah, well, me, I don't, yeah, I'm a baller. Don't get much sleep. Okay. I don't know if you want me to go down through these line items or whatever, but basically, this, this budget, the 406 budget, is pretty much all salaries, you know. The only thing extra other than the salaries are those few line items that add up to about $30,000 something, I think. But, you know, I have the other budget, I don't know, two new guys maybe, but I got another budget that I paid mostly on a real level. So this is basically mostly salaries, but there are some line items for printing, maintenance and repair that, that you all give me on this account some money to help pay those line items. Those line items are much more than what's on here, but I make up the difference out of my other account. So the bottom line here is like, I think last year we had a total approved of $1,330,000. This year, it's actually, it's come down. I've got it down a little bit this year. It's about $33,000 less than it was last year. Bottom line.
Between both departments?
So.
Between both departments?
No, 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 just, just like you hear. Just the four of us. Last year, what was true was a million thirty-three. This year... This year, I'm asking for just a million and six hundred seventy-three dollars.
I see where you request additional monies for your printing. I mean, that's just.
I did, yeah. Printing costs are going up.
Yes, and there's more people to send too.
Um, yeah, that goes every year. I've already spent this year from July 1, over $8,000.
Wow.
And I've got $10,000, I've got, only have $7,000 on this. I make up the rest of it.
Okay. So, so what is that on line item 219, the buildings and equipment rents, are you going from a thousand to 2,500? What is, what is that there?
Yeah, that is, it's, it takes care of like, you know, we get our, all the wastepaper, you know.
Shredding?
Shredding, or shredding that comes, you know, they do that monthly. Basically, that's about, basically what that is. That's about the only thing I pay out of 219 is for that shredding stuff. But I think last year, I think we spent about $2,000 for that.
So, no, no new positions or anything like that?
No, I think I'm still down, I've got, in this account, I've got 13 full-time and two part-time. And in the, or the assembly count, I've got 14 full-time and two part-time. So, I've got 31 total employees. I usually, in the years past, we've had 33, 32, 33. I'm down one or two, but we're getting the work done. So.
Another field piece?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we have, we have five in the field now, full-time, all the time, just reviews, you know, the property, picks up the new construction, all that stuff constantly year-round. I don't know what else you need to know on this, but I would say basically this is just salaries other than that, a little bit extra that helps to pay my bill.
Any other questions, counsel? I don't have any.
That's short and sweet on this. Thank you, Larry.
Thank you so much.
All right. Oh, I did, I did make a request for salary increase for $1,000 across the board, you know, inflation's up probably 6% I think this year again, so we always ask, you know. But you guys have been great with salary increases these last couple of years, salaries have gone up a lot, and we appreciate that, and employees appreciate that. They needed to be brought up. They're up to, they're at a pretty good level now, you know, in a good spot, but.
It's a tough, tough nut to crack here for a while with what's been going on, so.
So, but if you got that in your budget and you can do that, I'd appreciate that.
Take a look at it.
All right.
Thank you, Larry.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Honorable Mr. Petrusi with the county clerk. Welcome, Tony.
Thank you, Mr. President, Vice President, council member, Annie. Why? If I may, take a few minutes to recognize some of my employees, if that's okay? I promise I won't take too much of your time overall. I have with me today, Marsha, who is the chief deputy, Sherry, who's the finance director for the county, they work hand in hand a lot. Over in my clerk's office, the old building, John Alderton, Frank Carbaugh, Diana, supervisor, Debbie Castleman, Donnie Castleman, Kathy Goganier, Mary Hayward, Jen Miller, Amanda Perez, and Susie Wyden. They are over at the old building, and most of those employees now are doing a lot, doing more with less people than we did previous year. In the finance department, of course, I mentioned Sherry, she's the director of that along with Lori Mason Crawford and Lori Graham, takes care of payroll. A couple of years ago, if you remember, we had a, we subbed all that out, payroll department. We don't have that now. For the registration, we have Tom Gillums, who's the supervisor, we have Melissa Ballinger, Penny Dorsey, Betty Gano is part-time, Patty Lord is part-time, and Steve Smith is part-time. I'll probably pick up Maria Childers from judiciary if Mr. Lawrence hasn't mentioned that. He asked me to place her under me, working eight hours a day, part-time. I have no problem with that, got the money, so we're going to help out with that. Okay, most important part, budget. If you, if I could, I'd like to go to the easiest one first, which is the 421, civil service. Let me know when you're ready. Okay, I only just have a couple there, and for you, for Mr. Catlett and Mr. Boyd, civil service, we have a young woman that takes care of the civil service test, testing for the sheriff department. We're involved in actually going to the agility place where they do, you know, running and all that, and also testing wherever it might be at the sheriff's office. We've already, this new person, Miss Susie Wyden, who I've mentioned, so I had one underneath her belt, she did a fine job, so that's something we have to do. The sheriff department is not involved in that at all. Most of you, older fellows know that, been here a while. 218 postage, $500, stayed the same. Advertising in legal publications, I dropped that $500 because I really hadn't spent a whole lot as of right now, I don't anticipate spending that much at all, but so I dropped it to two. Professional services at 12 last year, and I've dropped it down to 10. And it's not a whole lot there at all as of, as of right now, so hopefully we won't need that. But overall, but, overall budget for 421 is $12,000. Don't have that?
Very good.
Next one, let's go with 402. My county clerk office, you see our, my salary is listed over there. I don't know if you all have, I know Mr. Boyd mentioned about the, the salaries are blocked, I mean, are locked in, but if I may, I want to, I want to go and put what I requested. You can pencil it in or you don't have to, if that's okay with the group? Gary, you fine with that? I'm going for 10% across the board for my employees on 103, the actual number, 726 And everything else is automatically plugged in. FICA will be $60,008 3580. The group insurance, 140 even, $140,000. Retirement, 106, count, $79,523 92. Overtime, $15,000. That's last year. Be a total amount for this group of $1,090,0598.92.
What was that number?
Okay?
What was, I'm sorry, what was the group insurance again?
Group insurance, 140 even.
140?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to contractual services, printing, 250, left the same. Travel, we dropped that down a little bit to $1,000. Advertising on the next, line item 220, dropped to 250. And this is all based on what's been spent up until now, you know, so I sort of prorated that, a lot of these things, that's why I dropped it or increased it. Training and education, $1,500. I'm a firm believer in that, it looks like we'll be doing some more education in county clerk's department also, so I bumped that up to $500. That's $1,500 altogether. News of subscription, sort of a standard thing, $1,000. 223, as you see, $50,000 compared to 72, and that is our Cox Holiday deal, and that also, included in the 72 was the contractual people who have the payroll, which we were paying them $20,000, $25,000. So, meeting with Ms. Sherry, we confirmed that $50,000 would comfortably take care of Cox Holiday excluding, since we don't have the payroll company anymore, we can do it in-house. So, we're able, hopefully we can save $22,000 there. Contracted services on 230, dropped to $25,010. 341, increased that to $30,000 from last year to 22. We've got a, you know, a lot, somebody mentioned about a lot more people coming into county, it's very true, so, you know, a little more active with paperwork and additional things. I know we did get a grant in, starting July 1, $11,000 for some items, which will help out dramatically. 342, record books, $1,000 there, we dropped a little bit. So, all I have on that one, so if you want a total requested for this account for 402,
No new positions?
That's correct, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do have a couple people, and that, that's open, but we feel we can do the work, less people. Of course, it's all based on what you all do for raises too, you know, I have that money. All right. One thing I wanted to bring up, let's get to 14, count 14, 13 first, elections. Let's go to the personnel services first, all based on 10% also, if you want to write this down beside the 103, which would be 355 516 70. FICA, 27, 197 03. Group insurance, $50,000. Retirement, $35,551 67. Overtime, $30,000. The last election, we spent, well, I didn't spend, overall process spent, actually 954 and a half hours of overtime for May and November elections. So, we're hoping we can do better with that. But I put it high because we have a major election coming up in 2024, higher than what I did in, what was in 2022, and, let me, I increased it a little bit. Printing, 212, $1,000 again. Travel, too, you all shouldn't have to change any of that, I think it's all locked in in your all's paperwork. 216, $25,000. Postage, two, going up, of course. Buildings and equipment rents, three. 220, code, went up a little bit on that, $25,000, seemed like we were spending more on some legal stuff. Training and education went up $2,000. Professional services, $6,000. Contracted services, which is our poll workers, went up to $190,000. If you remember, last year, the budget was started at 100, you all infused $85,000 to that because of the additional pay in poll workers from $200 to $300. So, went to 100 to, 185, I put in 190, because we've got some other issues going on with outside early voting.
Is that, is that going to be enough with additional poll?
Yeah, well, this, this would cover just one election.
So, I guess you're not really adding employees, right?
Well, we'll add some more poll workers to the outs, for 10 days, but this is just for the one election, so we should be okay. Departmental supplies, materials, 341, $90,000. Overall budget requested, 844, 265 40.
I hope you get more cooperation out of the state of West Virginia this time than you did last.
Well, councilman, you know, that's always, you know, I wasn't around for this, but I can assure you, the people that I've talked to as we speak, secretary of state's offices mainly the ones that we deal with, with elections, but they're, they're here locally, the people and voters know that, there's no excuse not to know something, they're going to be here in this building, I understand, that'll be a plus also, but I sort of disagree with you in what you said. I, I think they were there, I just don't think they were directed in the right way to get the information for their health. What, what I've seen through some local people and talking to Mr. Warner about some issue, so I respect what you say, but I, I think.
I hope communication is.
It will be, it has been, and if it's not, I'll take full responsibility. Now, the, the reason, you're probably wondering why 10% on any, Mr. Whitaker told me to. He said, "That's fine," so that's why I did it. It's not just something that.
So, you were talking to my dad?
Maybe.
Mr. Whitaker, okay, I just want to make sure.
It, it's just not something that I pulled out. Based on previous years, from, from an outsider looking in, and based on previous statements by other councilmen, that this should be another strong year for the, for the county, I looked at that, but that really isn't, you know, anybody can say anything if you Under the cost of letting adjustment, which is COLA, 8.7%, so, you know, that, that happened for a reason, because of what's happening out there. And also, the consumer price index. The last quarter, consumer prices for all, all items rose 6.5% from December 2021 to December 22. Food prices increased 10.4%, reflecting the 11.8% increase in prices for food at home and 8.3% increase in prices for food away from home. So, that's just one issue that, to me, affects people that, working in any business, no matter if it's governmental or private. So, just some numbers that I take a look at, especially this time of year. Any questions? That's all I have for the budget. We, we confirmed Bettleton Ritter Tan for the one polling, voting, we're working on South Berkeley area as we speak, at a substation. Training is involved with the voters, we've already went to one, they're going to another one, I believe in August, there's some training they need, and they want to go. So, that's where we're at. The, the old courthouse building's moving along fine. Cross-training is important, and they're, we're doing that, so we won't have to hire extra people, so that's where we're at.
Well, are you having fun?
Having fun? I am, if it wasn't for the people back here in the back, probably I wouldn't, but they've made a easy transition for me, and I hope I made an easy transition for them.
Good, good. Because I know your guy likes to have fun.
After five especially.
I, I know the training part is, is, is very important, even for the poll workers, and sometimes when you get new poll workers, because the, the amount that we've had over the years, the, the repetitiveness of them, kind of dwindled away, and, and I got fed with a fire hose, took a drink with a fire hose one time, learning how to work the polls, and so, training is, is very important.
Yeah, we've, we're going to have training this year at the old courthouse courtroom, a little bit more, more room. a little bit more, more room than here. No disrespect to this room, it's a great room, but we're going to have it there. With video, actually hands-on training, with especially the new poll workers. There are certain times we, we can do that, the year proposed, the same way with reaching out to the schools to get some of these young people registered.
Through the civics?
Yeah. There's, there's certain times we can only do that up to the state. We're here to do that.
Sounds good.
Anything else?
I'd just like to say, Tony, being, being you're here today, you know, I, I do happen to, to visit the courthouse and, and voters on occasion. And you, and you're, the morale of your staff, I see, is up. And that comes from a, a leadership role, so.
Thank you.
They're, they're working, I know they're working hard for you, you know? And they, they, they appreciate you come around, tell them good morning, and checking on, see what they need, and, and so, thank you.
I appreciate that. They're, they're all doing well. Can't say bad things anymore. It's a foreign word.
I bought a dozen eggs yesterday for two dollars and eighty-three cents, so it's getting better out there.
Good, good, good.
I have chicken.
That may influence my decision on the pay.
Absolutely. It, it should, it should. That way you can buy some more of the other high-priced stuff.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Next, we have Kevin Whitney with Crabtree, Werball and Associates on the final review of the Day Report Center edition.
Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. How are you doing?
I trust each of you have the, have the drawings and the views in front of you?
Nice, nice view.
Yes, it is.
That really helps.
Good, good.
Well, thank you.
Computers are amazing, aren't they?
Do you have any questions along the way? Please feel free to just jump in. I want to start just a quick, quick overview of how we got here. We began looking at this project around May of last year. We, we started with a quick study process where we, where we reviewed the functional program that's required. We developed an optimum organization for, for floor plates. And we also looked at the site in many different ways. The site has some, some limitations to it in that we found that there was amisements and underground utilities that were previously unknown. But our, our surveying crews found those and brought them to our attention. So we, we, we looked at that. And ultimately, we came, we presented three options to the building committee and, and landed on the option that we're going to be looking at today. Back in September, we, we brought, we brought the selected auction to the council and, and presented it. At that time, we had a two-story and a three-story option. It was decided to proceed with the three-story option. The first sheet is a, is a site plan. An aerial view, the Raleigh Street runs along the bottom of the page. Sheriff's, existing sheriff's department, you can see, is on the left side, and the existing Day Report Center is labeled, it's in, sort of in the center of the page, on the, on the right side of the new addition. The second, the second page is a, is a quick, a main entrance view. This is the view that you would see of the, of the new proposed addition, if you were enter from Raleigh Street.
When people enter the facility, they would come through the addition or the, or the existing?
There's a causeway between the two buildings.
Yep.
Okay, come in and split.
I was gonna, I was gonna touch in on that, on the, on sheet three, I guess, the site plan. But, but yes, to answer that question, the existing, the existing waiting room in Vestibule is currently positioned extending out from the front of the existing building. As you approach the building, you currently enter from the left side. Due to the selected building placement, we are, we are going to move the entrance to the right side. And you can, you can see that kind of in the center of this rendering, that we have a, we have a flat drop-off area for the parking.
How, how would they enter the building during construction?
We have two phases of construction planned. Phase one, we're going to work on building the new Vestibule, the new ramp, new stairs on the right side of the building, creating a new entrance. And people are still going to be able to use the building from the left-hand entrance. And then phase two, we will block off the existing entrance. We're going to add fencing along the base of the building and, and enclose the proposed construction area. And people will be able to enter the building through the new entrance. I mean, that'll, that serves, it's actually beneficial in a couple ways because of the long lead time items we're finding on a lot of the big equipment and electrical systems. We'll be able to do this minor renovation in addition to the new entrance while all that material's being processed and ordered. So. So, the material, the materials on the building, we, we decided to, we plan to utilize what's there. It's currently a dock brick pier, which is more of a modern brick that's available today. We're going to use that on the brick portion, which is in red. The canish grayish representation is a, is a metal panel system, which currently exists on the top of the new building and has a band, I mean, on the top of the existing entrance, and has a band around the top of the existing building. The window frames are going to be aluminum with a, with a dock bronze finish. And that dock bronze finish is going to be carried over to the trim of the canopy and the, the entrance canopy as well. Page three is a, is a site plan. And here is where you can, you can see the, the new, the new entrance with the, with the new entrance canopy on the, on, on the left side of the existing waiting area. That's going to be the designated phase one construction area. So pretty much from the face of the existing building, it'll extend out towards Raleigh Street aways, and we'll just have that sectioned off and fenced so that it's, it's protected and the visitors and the clients and staff to the existing building will, will, will not be able to, I guess, get in harm's way. And then, once that is, is done again, then the, the barricades will extend from the front of the, the front upper left-hand corner of the existing waiting area. We'll loop it out around and we'll enclose the, the proposed new construction area. With this on the site plan, you'll also see there's a, this create, this scheme creates an outdoor space. We're going to reuse the existing outdoor canopy to, to, in the plaza, the, the holds smaller group gatherings outdoors. The opposite half is that opportunity. There's also a small pergola planned, planned out there. Page four, first floor plan. Overall, this building is approximately nineteen thousand five hundred square feet. Roughly sixty-four hundred square feet or floor. The, the first floor is slightly larger because we have a, a small link that attaches to the existing building. First floor functions are primarily group rooms for, for group classes, instruction. They're organized and sized in a way where they offer a multitude of seating arrangements, which you can kind of see what we're, what, what we're proposing there. There's also a large multipurpose room, and that is for larger group gatherings. Currently, they don't have an area, they have such a large staff now, they don't have an area where all the staff can meet at any one time. So, they're trying to use this multipurpose room for that. There's also a new bathroom core. The, the existing bathrooms that were put in in the original building were slightly oversized for that facility, but not sized to, um, large enough to accommodate this new addition. Second floor is, is, is future space. We've, we've outlined some utilities there to plan ahead so that when that second floor is, is developed into its future use, all the utilities will be in place and will be able to be connected to without interrupting the first or the third floor. The second floor was chosen to be the, I guess, the unfinished future space due to the program just seems to be evolving over time, growing. So this allows them to either move future group, um, public rooms up into the second floor, or if they have more case managers from the third floor and they need additional office space, will be able to, to migrate down to the second floor, or possibly it's a combination of the two, or a different program altogether. And then finally, the third, third floor is just, is just office space. Case managers and staff will be housed up there. This is an extension of the, of the office space that's currently in the existing building.
I noticed that the men and women's bathroom on the third floor isn't directly over the men and, over the bathrooms over the first and second floor.
It is not. We, we looked at that and, I guess, due to the number of offices that were required up there, we tried to maximize the, the area of offices on the exterior windows. And because the bath, the bathroom requirements were, were slightly different, we just, we felt that the central location in the center of the building was just a better location. Plan, construction schedule. If we're, if, if you approve our proceeding with bidding today, our bid period's planned to be six weeks, starting next week, followed by approximately two months of contract, then negotiation, review with contractor. And then, once the contract is awarded, construction period's anticipated to be sixteen months.
Very nice.
The meeting we're modeling done to the existing building? I'm sorry? Meeting we're modeling done to the existing building?
No, no, the existing building is relatively new. I think they've been in it for two and a half years. Everything's in good shape. We've tried to minimize as much work in there as possible. We are going to bring to, it was most cost-effective to, to bring the power from the existing electrical room that's in there, so we're going to be doing some above-ceiling wiring and extending of water services. But besides that, the facility is going to remain open and unencumbered throughout the whole process. The only thing that really would be impacted is the waiting area. So we'll have to put up some temporary construction conditions in there to protect the public and, and separate the noise and dust.
Tim was very involved in these meetings to be able to have the vision to get what he feels his office needs as far as the space and whatnot. And also, Jack, our facilities director, was involved from a maintenance point of view to be able to take care of this building as time goes forward. So, there's, you know, had different entities, different folks looking at different concerns that they have to come up with this final product.
Yeah, I went over there and got a tour from Tim. Saw what was there, but I just wondered, they, they have pretty much their staff, maybe short a couple offices where they're at. There's a lot more offices here. But we intend to add that many more officers or, or the people sharing offices now, that that just.
He is, he is.
Like the existing offices, like he said, there won't be any changes there. So if you have all those offices, we're, we're adding this many more, are there that many short right now? That, that's just kind of the question.
He's at his capacity. He's beyond treatment or beyond it. And so, the additional, previous council, we, we could only see that, you know, the need would be growing. So the additional offices will be like for the recovered coaches, that you can only do, what's the amount that, is it this magic number? I forget exactly what it is, what, what you have to treat, and then the, the, the amount of services that you're giving. So, 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 but yeah, it is designed for, for growth, that's for sure.
I believe, if I remember right, he, he expressed that he had a need for more case managers now.
Case managers, yeah. Thank you.
Doesn't have a capacity of.
Well, there's a, Kevin, there's also, I think, a few more programs that he would like to institute, but just currently does not have the space to be able to do, so, you know.
I'd love to be able to speak with him because he, you know, he, he knows this. He's grown up in Tastic Program there. I know it's a, it's a model program for not only the state, but, but neighboring states, so.
He's worked hard.
Total square footage was nineteen, what, again? Eighteen?
Nineteen thousand or something?
Yeah, like nineteen-six, I believe. Somewhere around there, just under twenty thousand square feet.
So if you.
Oh, for the addition, yeah, nineteen-five.
Yeah. Tim's effort, blessed by this body, he is absolutely at capacity for service, with growing demand on home confinement, on all of the efforts of Day Report Center, as well as, remember, he's a full-fledged treatment center at this point in life.
Well, he has home confinement and everything else.
And all of that's at a halt for growth. So, while Mr. Boyd, there, there are more office space, restructuring the current space, a lot of the people are abandoning those current office space. They're going to be repurposed for testing purposes and things of that nature. So, even though it looks big on paper, it's not really. The second floor, the vacant floor, does allow for that growth that's predicted. What you're seeing here is to just address current demand, just to get to the point, get your services to where they can be with business. What's happening today, if the council agrees, is just the green light to go ahead and put it on the streets. That's Crabtree and Tracy. If, if the council agrees today, you already have secured the funding, you have earmarked and set aside, ready to go. So, all you need to do today, if you agree with this drawing, is give the green light to put it on the streets and see where the numbers come in. Kevin, what was the estimated, where did we think the project was going to land?
We are eight point five to nine point two million range.
What'd you say?
Eight five to nine two.
Eight five to nine two.
Yeah.
Approximately. Yeah, this is, this is a busy area. I mean, we're seeing that the, on that, on the bidding for this project, the number of contractors is not large. It's a tough market out there, there's a lot of work.
You, you did notice that Kevin's the project manager for the non-villain renovation, and when he's in the room, there's no noise downstairs.
I went down there before. I wanted to make sure.
So I'm saying, let it off. I'm just giving it out.
Right.
Alrighty, okay, we, I guess the, the next is, is this all agreeable to everybody? This is, this is going to be quite a, an asset to the community again.
Quite an asset to Raleigh Street.
Yes, it will.
Mr. President, I'd make the motion that we proceed with the bidding process with Crabtree and Werball and Associates.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
And do we have further discussion? And my only comment is that Tim Zaya has seen all this and, and worked with you all, and so, what we approved today is he's good to go with. Okay, that was my only question. Any other questions, comments?
All right.
Uh, all those in favor say aye. Like, sign opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Good work.
Alrighty. Vice President, I'm going to turn the gavel over to you. I do have prior engagement I got to get to, and I'm a little bit behind, so. Tracy, come on up. Eddie's going to take over, and I'm going to lead, so. Thank you all very much, and I'll see you all next week.
See you later.
Sorry.
Welcome, Tracy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The first grant that I have for acceptance is the Homeland Security Grant Program, fiscal year twenty-two, for the Berkeley County Emergency Management. The process to complete this is two years. We put in a grant for a total project cost of thirty-five thousand with a total award of thirty-five thousand. There is a rematch with this award. The fiscal year twenty-two Homeland Security Grant Program always plays an important role in the implementation of the National Preparedness System by supporting the building, sustainment and delivery of core capabilities essential to achieving the National Preparedness Goal of a secure and resilient nation. Delivering core capabilities requires the combination effort of the whole community rather than the exclusive effort of any single organization or level of government. The fiscal year twenty-two HSGP's allowable costs support efforts to build and sustain core capabilities across the prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and recovery mission areas, including the federal, including the following federal priorities. Cybersecurity, combating domestic violent extremism, protecting soft targets in crowded spaces, emergent threats, and intelligence and information sharing, and the state priorities of law enforcement, specialization teams, forensic analysis and attribution, state interoperable radio network, access and equipment, point of dispensing and distribution management resources, stop the bleed resources, regional response team training and equipment, community and public notification and warning. This particular grant awarded us thirty-five thousand towards the purchase of a Matrice three hundred RTK drone. We had put in two requests to better our chances of getting one. We put in one, I did the one for the Sheriff's Department, Elizabeth did the one for Emergency Management. This is a specialized drone with lights. It can pull someone out of the river with a connection kit. It is specifically designed for emergency disasters, emergency rescue, so on and so forth. The project...
Does this include maintenance and all that kind of stuff? I don't know anything about drones.
This is just the purchase.
This project...
Does it require much maintenance?
Batteries.
How big is this thing?
It's significant in size. It's not going to lift you up, it's going to kind of pull, you know, like it's just...
Other than what she said, pull you out of the river, I'm wondering...
I don't have to worry about anybody shooting it down.
No, I think what they're, what they were describing, it has a hand...
Right.
Where it can actually, like, perhaps take a string across...
Yeah.
The river, then additional ropes can be attached and pulled across. That, I think that's the intent there.
So it carries the rope to the person, and then people pull the rope?
It can, I don't know if it, it depends, I don't know how strong this is, but I think it can carry like a fishing line to the other side, and then a fishing line could be attached to a rope and then drove.
It can drop a life vest into the person in the water.
Oh, that'd be great, because they're light anyway.
I can't remember exactly the weight...
It was a lot.
But the payload is a few pounds, because they demonstrated it with, like, a weight.
That'd be wonderful.
Can you see that from there, Tracy?
It looks like a regular drone.
So it's not giant?
This project directly supported the twenty-twenty-two HSGP National Preparedness System in the five mission areas under authorization equipment for intelligence and information sharing to take proactive measures, recognition and analysis to ensure emergency management and the Sheriff's Department can effectively respond to disasters, crime scenes, search and rescues to provide support during an emergency, or support first responders in the field.
So what agency is actually...
It was actually awarded to Emergency Management.
And you have two licensed drone pilots in your portfolio, one at Homeland Security, Randy Little, and Archie Locke in IT, that are actual licensed pilots. Actually, Archie's a licensed data pilot.
We have, in the past, we've used IT services for their drone, which works out very well. This one will be at the ready of the Emergency Management Group. Also, I think is equipped with a thermal imager...
Yeah.
Which could assist in search and rescue capabilities also. So anybody else have any questions? Okay, I need a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-two HSGP grant for Berkeley County Council.
Yes.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, Berkeley County Emergency Management.
Okay, thank you. Motion, a second, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.
Next acceptance is another HSGP grant award for Berkeley County Council for the IT Department. It is a two-year duration to complete. The total cost was sixteen thousand dollars, the total award was sixteen thousand dollars. It is the same background information. This is to purchase cybersecurity hardware equipment. This project directly supports the twenty-twenty-two HSGP National Prior, Priority Area of Cybersecurity, building resilience in our county government network, improving the ability to effectively secure and defend information.
So what hardware are you going to secretly have?
Can't tell you. I think that we probably all know the values of this after what's been going on with our school system. Gary, is there anything you can add to this?
With this, there is a national effort to make local government entities as secure as possible. So I would offer that this particular identified addresses levels of communication between agencies.
Okay, any other questions? Need a motion to approve the acceptance of the fiscal year twenty-two Homeland, or HSGP grant for the council.
I'd say move.
Second.
Probably move, and second, any other questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? I'd say, thank you.
The third acceptance, HSGP grant for fiscal year twenty-two for the Berkeley County Sheriff's Department, specifically SWAT team, duration to complete purchases is two years. Total project cost seventy-five thousand, total award seventy-five thousand, zero match, same background information. This grant will pay for the following: fourteen night vision devices at seventy-five thousand dollars. This project, proposed project directly supported the fiscal year twenty-two State Priorities of Law Enforcement Capability Enhancement through law enforcement specialized teams and response team equipment that will develop, maintain, and mature critical law enforcement capabilities, including training and equipment for specialized teams, equipment to improve officer safety, systems to improve fixed and mobile monitoring capabilities.
They don't have anything now?
They are very outdated, what they do have.
Yeah, any other questions about the night vision? And if everybody will notice that in all these grants are zero match, which is a good deal for us, those dollars coming from the state. If we don't get them, somebody else will. So need a motion to accept the SWAT grant.
Make a motion.
Thank you. Probably move, and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'd say have it, thank you.
The fourth grant for acceptance is the State of West Virginia Department of Art, Culture, and History. The funding source is Records Management and Preservation Board Grant for fiscal year twenty-four. This for the Circuit Clerk and County Clerk's offices. The duration is twelve months, twelve months to complete, beginning July first, twenty-twenty-three, ending six thirty, twenty-twenty-four. The total state award was twenty-three thousand, seven hundred, two hundred and seventy-one dollars. The total project cost was twenty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and the total match required is two thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The Record Management and Preservation Board awards grant to county commissions to assist office holders in the management and preservation of county records. The grant funding will pay for the following. In the Circuit Clerk's office, it will pay for personnel, eleven thousand dollars total cost, with a grant request of ten thousand and a matching of one thousand for continuing digitization, purging or shredding records authorized for destruction. It also is going to pay for one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars total cost with a grant request of one thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars for rebind in Law Order Book sixteen and new binders for Law Order Books one and two, and that has a match of one hundred and seventy-two dollars. In the County Clerk's office, it is for, under the records and shelving and storage, for a total cost of twelve thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars and a grant award of eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty-four dollars for a map and cabinet sleeve, and the match is one thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars.
Well, I, the clerk, the county clerk, and the circuit clerk have both came before when they did their presentations requesting funds for those particular items. So it's fortunate that we were able to receive a grant for these. So...
When will that be available?
It's on a drawdown basis, and it begins July first.
Any other questions?
So what you're saying is they weren't aware of this before they...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they were.
We just got this notification two weeks ago.
Yeah, it was applied for back...
Last September.
Yeah, so it was before either one of them took office. Remember, the previous clerk had asked, you know, for money for sleeving and whatnot. It was not approved by the council, but because we knew there was a grant, we know we were going to write a grant, we got a good chance of getting it, just based off your all success rate. So, anything else?
No, I mean, hopefully we, you know, there'll be a great, great use for them, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe reduce some of their line items to cover some of the salary costs.
That's right. Yep. So need a motion to, to accepting...
I'd move to do that.
RM PG fiscal year twenty-four grant award. It's been properly moved, and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'd say have it, thank you. Thank you, Tracy. Next up, Jeff Maulzy, our Deputy Legal Director, in discussion regarding lease revenue bonds for Berkeley County Judicial Center, Project Series twenty-two-three A.
Hello. This order is, I'm going to read the whole title into the record before I explain what it really means in simpler terms, but it's very similar to the order that the council entered in, I believe, November. There's at least one new council member since then, possibly two, I can't remember.
Came in December.
Okay, so then, yeah, I just want to read this title into the record. Our Bond Council can see this, and would recommend that, I believe, so. This word is in Ray, the acquisition, design, construction, renovation, improvement, and equipping by the Berkeley County Building Commission of the property located at four-hundred West Stevens Street, Martinsburg, Berkeley County, West Virginia, which is commonly known as the Dunn Building, and possibly the purchase and installation of LED lighting in one or more of the buildings of the property described herein for continued use as county offices and judicial center and related facilities. Authorizing the execution and delivery of an eleventh supplemental lease agreement between the County Council of Berkeley County, West Virginia, and the Berkeley County Building Commission, and authorizing and directing the execution and delivery of a bond purchase agreement among the County Council, said Building Commission, and the underwriter for the lease revenue bonds to be issued by the Building Commission to pay all or a portion of the costs of the construction, renovation, improvement, and equipping of the Dunn Building on such property, and possibly the purchase and installation of such LED lighting, and authorizing other necessary actions in connection with the board. So, this order has to do with the issuance of bonds by the Building Commission. The Build, the Building Commission owns the Dunn Building, the Judicial Center, Bay Report Center, and technically the council leases them from the Building Commission, basically for the cost of paying the interest on bonds that have been issued previously, and then whatever gets added to it, such as this. The eleventh supplemental lease agreement just incorporates this new round of funding into the agreement that's already obviously been revised a number of times. So the, this bond issuance is termed the lease revenue bonds Berkeley County Judicial Center Project Series two, twenty-two-three A. And the, here is, this is my thought, it was that this is primarily intended to be the LED lighting primarily, but because of the way this is worded, it could be used for other purposes such as Dunn Building renovations that, and any other related kind of expense that is, it's all one big effort. And so the first one was more directed, I believe, towards the Dunn Building. This one is more directed towards the Lucky, but the wording of it allows, so that we don't have to sort it out exactly which dollar is coming from exactly which bond issuance. So what this order, if approved by the council, would do in the simpler terms is it orders the issuance by the Building Commission of the lease revenue bonds, Series twenty-two-three A, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed four million dollars to finance these projects, as I discussed, and the paid costs associated with issuing the bonds. The, it authorizes the council to enter into the eleventh supplemental lease agreement with the Building Commission, basically to incorporate this new round of funding into lease payments, basically the rent for these properties. It also authorizes the president of the County Council to execute, sign the eleventh supplemental lease agreement, which is attached as exhibit A. The, it authorizes the president to sign the bond purchase agreement, which is attached as exhibit B, and it authorizes the, well, the County Council approves the designation of these bonds as qualified tax-exempt obligations under the federal tax code, basically so that it's treated properly for tax purposes for those who purchase the bonds. And it, the council, by entering this order, states, represents that the not more than ten million dollars, an aggregate principal amount of obligation that are excludable, or the interest which is excludable from gross income for federal income tax purposes, will be issued during this calendar year, twenty-two-three. And then finally, it authorizes the president, the county clerk, and pretty much anybody else on behalf of the County Council, for example, Mr. Sill, or Mr. DeLaGuetti will probably be signing an opinion letter, if you ask for that kind of thing, to sign any kind of documents, agreements, authorizations that they need to get the details of this worked out to completion. So if the council approves, they will revise and accomplish this.
Mr. Yon?
Any questions?
Sorry, Jeff. You got anything that you...
I have, but the work that we do, the piece on, what we mentioned earlier, but I can say for now, all of this, all of this money, all of the monies that you're talking about borrowing here, has been discussed and applied to projects that you know and need to play now. As Mr. Maulzy mentioned, you can only exercise this on ten million dollars worth of principal annually in a calendar year. So this will address practically half of the availability, and I think the projects and capital project that you've spoken of, rather have cash earmarked for some of the ARPA and CARES monies laid available, plus this will fully fund and support all of your activities to do this much as quickly as possible.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. But you do need a motion for us to approve...
Yes.
To the...
Yes.
Pass or to vote to approve this order? Okay, need a motion to approve the order to regarding the lease revenue bonds, Series twenty-two... Series 2023A.
Second.
And properly move the second, all in favor? Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Just running a few minutes ahead. Gary, are you ready?
Okay, Paul, let's go ahead. So the next item on your agenda is to, to deal with the bid recommendation for the monies that you just processed the order through. If I could just take five minutes and kind of recognize what this body has done and, and kind of address an email that came out on the 17th. So just so you know, this body is the only double A rated bond counting in the state of West Virginia. There were two, now there are one, and it's you. That effort is, is to the credit of this body, but there's, there's two folks that I would like to mention that have led this body for a very long time that got you to this point. Noel Willing, who was legal counsel for many years, was part of the directive, but more importantly is Alan Davis, who is not here today. His effort, his, his brilliance in financing and his leadership kind of guided this group to be able to be in the position we are today. Just as an example, you have currently $22.5 million worth of debt that's wrapped up in bonds. What you're about to discuss is the opportunity to approve another 5 million, which would put you at $27,580,000. Many of that will be eliminated in this decade, the maturity dates and the calls that are there. So I think you, I, I would not have done justice, although I'm, I'm going to just read some paperwork that Alan wrote, but I'm telling you, you've got great leadership to get you where you are. And the fact that Moody's has changed the ratings for everyone excluding you only solidifies that, that statement. I mean, you've done a great job, and you've got a great team to bring you here. What we have in front of us today, or have in front of you today, and what Alan's proposing, I'm just delivering his comments. On the 16th of February, you opened bids to fund what you had approved for LED lighting in the Judicial Center, and several, the Sheriff's Department, Animal Control, and Emergency Services Building. That was my project that I proposed to you and you approved, and you remember the return on investment with this kind of stuff is insane. The money comes back very, very fast. The County Council approved that, that, that money in that project, and we use, we've been using some of your existing funds to cover that, in order to, to kind of spread out and to repay yourself. The discussion was had, and that's the purpose of your bonds. You had, I think, what is it, 2, 4, 6, 8 respondents to your bid advertisement, and the cheapest one of those was Cardian Company that offered 3.13 for five years for your LEDs, and then the other 2 million, 3.83, and that's for 20 years. Both of them with the five year, well, the second with the five year call. So within five years, if you're still in the financial position you are today, and you so choose to pay these bonds off, you can pay the, the 20 year off in five years with no penalty. It's still good money, you still earn those percentage rates because of your bond rating and your due diligence. Just as an example, one of the most current counties that lost their double A rating carry $226.5 million in bond debt. And again, today, you're $22,508. So.
Does that 22.5 now include the 10 million for the David Porter Center additional?
No, that's not.
It does not.
That's, that would be an additional 10 million. It, it is, Alan's not here, but I, I believe that the financing for the DRC is ARPA monies, Mr. Catlet, and it's in your bank account.
For the additional?
Yes, yeah, so.
ARPA and plus his billing that he'll be able to do.
So as it's slated now, it's unfortunate you asked me that question with Alan's actions, because he, he would have told you in 10 seconds in two paragraphs exactly what it was, but as I understand it, as of today, the total debt service for bonding is only relative to the LEDs, and a small portion of the extra money, the extra 2 million, it is earmarked to finalize and finish the DRC. And this building is already identified, so what you're talking about today, just for the purposes of these, covers anything that's in your play right now. So what we're asking the council, what Alan's asking, and everyone in involvement has discussed, is that the council approved Cardian Company for the 2023As, 3.13 for 3 million for five years, and then the other 2 million at 3.83, and that's a 20 year with the opportunity to call in five.
Okay, any other questions for Gary? Okay, I need a, a motion to approve Cardian Company, which, which was listed on the RFP for 3 million, five year bank qualified bonds, and a 2 billion, 20 year qualified bond, bank qualified. Let me see here.
They're from Charleston.
Charleston, West Virginia. That's over. It's been properly, motion? Second, all in favor? Aye. Eyes have it, thank you very much. Gary or Jeff, do we have any reason for executive session now? Items on the public? Come forward, please, yes, come on up, sir.
I just have a quick comment, I hadn't intended-
This is for the record, Sean, it's Sean Wilt.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. I hadn't intended on making any comments, but the gentleman from the County Council, or from the County Clerk's office came up, and I would just like to, like, make a comment in brief of a mind. In 2022, I served as a poll worker for the first time in my life, I turned 50 this year. I had never, not that I had never had an interest, it's just I kind of honestly didn't have the time, but this, this time I did. I'm very happy to hear that the county is apparently trying to take the, the poll worker training more seriously, because, and, and this is not a slight against anyone, it's just an observation of reality. The training session that I attended for, to be a poll worker, while it's not brain surgery, was also very, very unthorough and incomplete. There was no opportunity for hands-on training with the machines. The video that we were given to watch, which was the majority of the training, was out of date. Much of, well, much is a, is a little bit of a, of a, of a large term, but a, a good bit of the information in the video did not pertain to some of the machines or things that we would use in. I'm very much looking forward to hopefully that that training is, is better handled, because I had a number of friends that were poll workers this year, as the Secretary of, that year as the Secretary of State had put out a call that we, that the state needed help. And it seemed like, from what I was told from some, from some people who were involved in the situation earlier, that there had been a lot of people, as compared to previous election years, that had come out to serve as poll workers. But the general thing that I heard from the majority of people that I did not know, and people that I did know, was the training for them to go through it for the first time, and some went through it as pressure, was, was a joke. And, and that's just an honest assessment of the reality of the situation. And I'm, I'm glad to hear that hopefully that's going to change, because there are many people who come to be poll workers, especially some that are, that are in the older part of our population, that they learn better by hands-on than by watching a video, or maybe even by someone explaining it to them, because they're, they're concerned that they might touch something or whatever with modern technology and cause problems. And it seems like better training would be a way to alleviate that situation. The other, the other concern that I would like to air, and I'm the type of person that I don't like to bring problems to someone unless I have a, an answer to that situation. Unfortunately, this one I, I have no, no answer to it, but I feel it's something that maybe the County Clerk's office should look at and address if they can in some way, and that is, there was a person that I worked with, who was an employee of the city, who said that, and I quote, "She was made to come and work as a poll worker to be a fill gap because of not enough people, I guess, that had shown up and shown interest, or because they had had people that had decided not to be poll workers at the last minute." And if I had a nickel for every time that she told myself, or another poll worker that was there, or a voter, that she was being forced to work at polls by the county or by the city, whoever, whoever it is that she worked for, against her wishes, and that she didn't work for the voters, and that she didn't want to be there, I could go buy a dozen eggs at today's prices. I don't know how this situation can be addressed or resolved, but that does not seem like something that you want people doing, especially in a situation like that, because that discourages people from coming out and voting to hear stuff like that. And she was very, very vocal about it. And the other, the one last issue that I would like to address is also with poll workers. As we all know, you have to have representatives from each local party, basically, to work a poll. There was a woman who was there, who, she told us that she was registered as an independent, newly registered as an independent in this state, because she had moved here from another state. She mistakenly, I believe, told us later in the evening that she had actually been a registered Democrat in another state, and that this was like her, I believe she said, third or fourth time in a period of around 20 years, that she had moved from one state to another to work at an election, and she alluded to the fact of that this change in political party was so that she could work at a poll. And, you know, not necessarily be as a Democrat, but it was very obvious by things that she said while we were there to myself and other poll workers and voters, it was very obvious that she was, she had the knee behind her name in other places for a reason. And after that, I looked into this, and recently it has come to light that there are actually organizations that facilitate this, and I encourage you to go look it up, because there are records and, and reports about it of places that are doing this with people, they're moving them around like a shell game, so that they can put them in to work election polls. Now, this is not a conspiracy theory, this is a statement of fact. All you have to do is go look it up and do the research yourself, I promise you it's there. And I don't know how to fix or solve this situation, but it sure that seems to me as something that would be a matter of concern. Other than that, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Hang on just a second, Ms. Will, have you, have you spoke to the clerk who is responsible for voters' registration about this?
No, sir, for one reason. There seems to be a lot of shakeup in the, in the county clerks of when it comes to do, to do with things with voting and poll workers and, and things like this. And to be completely honest, I'm never quite sure since then, uh, who I would talk to, because there's, there seems to be, like, a lot of people moving in and out of offices, people being fired right before an election, and things like that. And if you want me to be completely honest, there's twice that I've been to the voter registration office and asked for some information, and I have been told, just the reality that I've been told a lot, because when I called other places to find out, they tell me, no, 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 that, that's their office, they're supposed to deal with that, they're supposed to take care of this for you. And what it seems more like is that the people that were there didn't want to deal with it, they didn't want to deal with me, or whatever, and so it gets to the point of where you just get tired of going back and hearing someone trying to pass the buck because, or whatever, because they don't want to deal with it.
Okay, I would suggest you contact our clerk, who's Anthony Petrucci?
He was just here earlier.
Yes, sir. The folks in voters' registration are his employees here, responsible for our voting precincts and all those workings, so thank you for your comments, but I would, I would strongly suggest that you speak with him about your concerns, because he's the one that can fix it.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. Vice President, and I'm ready to recess.
We are recessed.